Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to Council Chambers and welcome to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Friday, October 25th, 2002. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. here in Council Chambers, and we do invite the public to join us. For those of you unable to attend, Council meetings can also be viewed live from home on your cable stations, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via Council phone. We have six members present at this time. It is about 10 after 10:00 a.m., so we are shy of a quorum, but this being Friday, as is customary, we do have a number of special presentations and recognitions to be made. I'd like to begin today's meeting by recognizing Councilmember Weiss.
This is Eric Gersing. Hi Gerald Levy, how are you?
Hey, what are you doing?
I spoke to your dad yesterday. He was just looking at the trees and the ball.
Yeah, he's having the best time. His book just came out. We'll have to get you a copy of it.
We're doing a UCLA thing. We can talk about the trees in Cambridge if you'd like.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, good morning, everybody. Anybody know what this weekend is? This is homecoming weekend at the finest university in Los Angeles, UCLA. And part in recognition of that, but part in recognition of two tremendous leaders from UCLA, I am very pleased to introduce to you the Chancellor of UCLA, Albert Carnasale, and the Dean and Provost of the School of Medicine, Dr. Gerald Levy. And they're here today so we can recognize, and I see another great Bruin has just walked in, Councilmember Wendy Grule, we can recognize in particular the UCLA Medical Center and the UCLA School of Medicine for all of its nationally recognized programs, and also to highlight for all of you the extraordinary advances we're going to continue to expect from UCLA in the years to come, as the new medical center, which I jogged past every morning, is rapidly, rapidly coming to fruition. It's an extraordinary sight there on the campus, on the western side of the campus. The UCLA Medical Center opened its doors in 1955. It has been a healthcare innovator ever since, and I'm very fortunate for that because I was born there in 1964. And since then, more than 300,000 people from around the world come to UCLA every year to receive treatments. I'm sure many of you just recently were as amazed as I was and as amazed as many people in the city were at the extraordinary work they did at UCLA for those conjoined twins from Central America. That's just one example of the leading, cutting-edge work that they do at UCLA. They're highly ranked in numerous specialty areas, including a number-one ranking in geriatrics for the 11th consecutive year, high rankings in the field of psychiatry at the UCLA Neuropsychiatric Hospital, the Johnson Comprehensive Cancer Center, and also other facilities, facilities which are on our minds these days in Los Angeles as we try to cope with the looming crisis in trauma care. There is the Harbor UCLA Medical Center, the Olive View UCLA Medical Center, Santa Monica UCLA Medical Center, and the affiliation UCLA has with the Veterans Affair Medical Center in West Los Angeles. Let me tell you a little bit about Chancellor Carnasale. He has been at UCLA since 1997, and he was formerly at Harvard University for 23 years, where he ultimately served as Provost. He is an expert in public policy, and in particular in the field of national security policy and arms control. He has capably served our government at the highest levels for several decades, and today I will not try to dump my latest research paper on you, but only because I've done that to him in the past. He is one of our nation's most preeminent thinkers in the area of national security strategy. Dr. Levy is a specialist in internal medicine with a particular interest in issues relating to the nation's supply of physicians. He's well-known for his research on the thyroid gland, and he has served in a variety of extraordinarily impressive capacities in our nation, including as an advisor to the National Institutes of Health. And so I'd like to make this presentation to Chancellor Carnasale and to Dr. Levy, the Provost and Dean of the Medical School, on behalf of the City Council, and ask them to make a few remarks.
Ms. Grule.
Yes, before we have a chance to speak, excuse my voice, I'm the end of a cold, but just want to, as a fellow Bruin with my colleague, Councilmember Weiss, and if Councilmember Reyes was here, he would say the same thing about how proud we are to be alumnus of UCLA, and that we are so proud, not only what you do every day for the students, but what you do for the community. And many of us had an opportunity at UCLA Day in City Hall last week to really even learn more about what you're doing in each of our neighborhoods, and that you're reaching out outside your campus walls, in essence, to the rest of the city of Los Angeles. So we're proud to be here today, as homecoming is tomorrow. Jack, are you riding in the parade?
Let me check my schedule.
Yeah, I'll ride with you if you are, okay? But most importantly, we want to make sure we also beat USC, for those of my colleagues that are USC graduates. We're going to beat USC. But just want to also add my congratulations and really also admiration for both Mr. Carnasale and Dr. Levy for all that you've done for our community in Los Angeles, and I think the world as well. So glad you're here today, and we'll all be watching tomorrow. Thank you.
Mr. LeBange.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. We welcome the great University of California, Los Angeles, which has a great history in our city. Originally, the University of California Southern Branch, part of the Berkeley system, or the California system on Vermont Avenue, right at Normal Avenue, right down on Vermont, and then moved to Westwood to get away from the city, as they say. And now you're a city on your own in the sense of the impact that you give to our great city. So I want to thank the University of California, Los Angeles, for all that you do and it's stepping up, and when you see many different parts of your community, whether it's the medical center that was spoken of this morning, but many different parts of the UCLA community is in the great tradition of universities. And we're very fortunate in our city to have two great universities, with the University of California at Los Angeles and the University of Southern California, two great, great institutions. And I'm very pleased to stand here that I was blessed as a person to have two great mentors. One, John Ferraro, who was one of the greatest Trojans ever from the University of Southern California, and the other, Milt Davis, who played for Red Sanders and was a great educator at Los Angeles City College, and has an impact in a dear friend in my life. So I stand for all those reasons to salute the university for what you've done and continue to do, but also that special care, that your outreach, and bringing all the universities and colleges, whether it's Loyola Marymount, or Occidental, or California State University, Los Angeles, and Cal State Northridge, everyone standing up and following the lead, and it's the great lead that everybody's providing, especially the University of California at Los Angeles. Thank you for all that you do all the time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the kind words. A special thanks to Councilmember Jack Weiss for arranging this today and the entire council. We're proud of our medical center, UCLA Medical Center. We're proud of this recognition. I do want to say a word. You mentioned not only USC, but John Ferraro. I have one of the moments of which I'm in many ways most proud. John Ferraro was a friend, and he was with me at Pauley Pavilion watching a Bruin basketball game, and somebody came up and said, "John Ferraro, what are you doing here?" To which he responded, "I can't help it. He's my friend." And I must say, it's one of the most wonderful things, one of my most wonderful memories about John Ferraro and about the governance of our great city. I certainly want to commend Dr. Gerald Levy, Provost of Medical Sciences at UCLA, for all that he has done to bring about this recognition of the medical center, and the fine work of an incredible team of doctors and nurses and technicians and staff who have helped to make UCLA Medical Center the best in the West and one of the very finest in the country. It was mentioned that we're building our new medical center. The reason is that the old one was damaged in the earthquake in 1994 and cannot be brought back up to seismic standards. This new one, the architect is IMPE. It will be the most magnificent medical center of the 21st century and will enable us to provide even better care to the many patients. Also, as you know, our medical and dental staffs not only serve about 300,000 patients per year at the medical center, but they're out elsewhere in our city all of the time, serving the broader community. A broad range of things. We could take too much time providing a list, but some of the activities that are out well beyond our own borders are the UCLA AIDS Institute, the Center for Healthier Children, Families, and Communities, the Mobile Eye Clinic, which is all around our region, the Union Rescue Mission downtown, the Venice Dental Center. So there are many of them throughout the city, and we're proud of all of them. And of course, most recently, we've been recognized for the extraordinary work that's been done on the formerly conjoined twins, the two Marias who are doing well, and again, a team of about 50 people at UCLA primarily donating their time, probably at least $2 million worth of their expertise. And now those children are doing extraordinarily well. This was an effort led by neurosurgeon Dr. Jorge Lazaroff and plastic surgeon Dr. Henry Kawamoto Jr. and, as I say, an extraordinary team, and they've done their job, and the young girls are doing just fine. So we at UCLA take extraordinary pride in our medical enterprise. We're here to serve Los Angeles and beyond, and we're most grateful for the recognition. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I'd like to join with Chancellor Carnasale in thanking Councilman Weiss and all of the Los Angeles City Council for this wonderful honor. We're really quite thrilled about it. And we're both humbled and proud that the UCLA Medical Center has been rated in the top hospitals of the world for now 13 consecutive years by U.S. News and World Report. We've rated in the top five of the country, and of course, as the Chancellor has mentioned, we've been rated best hospital west of the Mississippi for this period of time. I would like to tell you, just for a few moments, why we have achieved such a rating, because I think you may find this of some interest. First of all, we have extraordinary physicians at UCLA. At least 84 of our faculty, depending on which publication you read, are considered amongst the finest doctors in America. These physicians have amazing dedication to their patients. We have specialties that rank second to none. 13 of our subspecialties are rated in the top 20 in the United States, and that is a figure that exceeds those in most big cities where there are multiple medical schools. And these subspecialties have been groomed over the past 40 to 50 years of the existence of the UCLA School of Medicine and the UCLA Medical Center. Secondly, I'd like to acknowledge that we have extraordinary nurses, and I think most of you recognize there's a very acute nursing shortage, but yet UCLA has succeeded in maintaining a superb staff of nurses, and they deserve recognition for this award as well, as well as the ordinary employees who just make a hospital a very special place. Third, UCLA has been, since its inception, dedicated to research and the scientific method. We believe that the best medical care is science-based, and this science-driven medical care has enabled us to provide the very finest of medical care to our patients. When you do come to the UCLA Medical Center, there are many standard treatments, but for those who are really seriously ill, we frequently have very cutting-edge therapies which often make the difference. Also, I would like to just deviate just for a second here, and again, some things which have been mentioned already this morning, that is our educational programs. I think you'd be interested to know that in the past 50 years, over 6,000 physicians have graduated from the UCLA School of Medicine, now known, if I can get in the plug, the David Geffen School of Medicine at UCLA. These physicians, in large part, are practicing here in the city of Los Angeles, and certainly most of them in the general Southern California area. And we also have strong affiliations to Cedars-Sinai, to the two-county hospitals for which we supply much of the faculty, both at Harbor UCLA Medical Center and at Olive View Medical Center, to the Kaiser system where we have close educational ties. We are the university that relates to the Veterans Administration, and we have strong contacts with the Charles R. Drew School of Medicine. So we are having an impact. We do care about our community. We are passionate about the health of the citizens of Los Angeles. So again, I thank all of you for this extraordinary recognition. All of us at UCLA are deeply grateful to the Los Angeles City Council and of course to Councilmember Weiss for initiating this recognition. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Congratulations. Good luck tomorrow. For our next presentation, the chair recognizes Councilmember Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, if Tim and Susan will please join me here along with Ron Bucher, our City Hall photographer, who doesn't want to come up here, but he's going to. This all started with our City Hall photographer, who brought to my attention that Tim and Susan Cashman, residents of West Hills, were going out and removing graffiti. And over a period of time, over 10 years, Tim and Susan have been going through the Canoga Park West Valley community, and currently at Nap Ranch Park are the individuals who are maintaining the cleanliness of that facility. Ron, you're supposed to join us up here. Somebody else can take pictures for occasion. This started from you, man. So what they did was take it upon themselves to rid the community of the graffiti, and Ron Bucher, our City Hall photographer, who seldom gets on television, but you're here today, never, brought to my attention, and he'd drive by and he'd see these people removing graffiti. And this was going over a period of years, over 10 years. And he takes his little dog out for a walk and sees these people removing graffiti, and he says, "Councilman, why don't you recognize these folks? They're spending their time, their energy, their money out in your district." And I said, "Wonderful." Well, it turns out that Ron never knew it was Tim, but he recognized Susan, who's an accomplished singer, who was out there doing this over the years. So here we have today the culmination of the many, many years of dedication to the city of Los Angeles, to that West San Fernando Valley, the proud area I represent, of cleaning up that community. And I listened on the news this morning, Chief Bratton, who was officially sworn in, his number-one issue for the city of Los Angeles is what?
Graffiti.
Graffiti. So here we have people who have great vision for the last 10 years, cleaning up what Chief Bratton's going to do, his initial stages here as the Chief of Police of the City of Los Angeles, to attack graffiti. Through their many, many hours of dedication to the West San Fernando Valley, their many, many hours of removing graffiti, we acknowledged this morning, and they haven't caught any of the vandals. But when you do catch those vandals, it's $1,000 per vandal, so you can make some extra money on the side, Tim and Susan, by bringing those people forward to seek justice in our system. So I have, on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, certificate of appreciation hereby recognized for your outstanding citizenship and activities enhancing community betterment. I've got one for Susan. I've got one for Tim. Hereby awarded this certificate of appreciation for exemplary efforts and accomplishments which have been of great value to the community and to the city of Los Angeles, and which have helped to further the common goal of making our city a better place in which to live. You folks are what community policing, what neighborhood councils are all about, and we had a Transportation Commission meeting in the district at West Hills Hospital recently. Tim and Susan were there. They're part of our Neighborhood Council. They're part of our community, very vibrant members of our They're part of our community, very vibrant members of our community. So, Tim, a few words from you, and Susan, a few words from you as you take the microphone. Tim.
Thank you, Councilman Zine. As Councilman Zine mentioned, we've been doing this for over 10 years, and it started by my lovely wife coming home from the office and saying, "Go out and get us some paints and brushes. We're going to paint tomorrow." And she organized a group of people, and it ended up there were six of us, and it took us all day. We went from Victory to Van Owen, and then down to Platt, and cleaned up the terrible mess that it was then. We've been able to keep up with it since then, and I really didn't do it for the city. I did it for myself. The graffiti is so distasteful and oftentimes so vulgar. It needs to be eradicated as soon as it can happen. But I thank mostly my wife for prodding me on. Thank you very much.
Susan.
I really don't have anything to add to that. This is my hero. This guy here is the guy that is doing it, is doing it single-handedly, and he's doing a great job, and it's a pleasure being married to him for 40 years. He still does what I say.
Mr. President, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Zine. Members, let's take a brief pause in presentations. I believe we do have a quorum present now. Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Bernson Galanter, Garcia, Grue, Hahn, Holden, Labange, Miss Kowski, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, really, Thomas, Weiss, Zine, Padilla, 10 members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
And without objection, members, let's sweep through the agenda, call item special, and then we turn to presentations. Mr. Clerk, for order of business, please.
Mr. President, items numbers one and two are items noticed for public hearing. I believe Mr. Weiss wants to continue item number one until November 11th for Ms. Kowski.
Okay. Members, request to continue item number one to November 11th. Without objection, on item number two, I do not have requests, members of the public, to address the council on this item. We shall deem the public hearing open and closed. Members wishing to call item number two special, seeing none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Item number two is approved.
Mr. President, items numbers three through 37 are items which public hearings have been held.
Items three through 37 now before us. Motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearings. Members wishing to call any specials? Four called special by Mr. Garcetti. Any other specials? Items three through 37. 24 called special by Mr. Labange. Any other specials? Mrs. Grue.
Item 10 for Jack Weiss.
Item number 10 called special for Mr. Weiss. Any other specials? Items three through 37, Mr. Holden. Item six called special by Mr. Holden. We have just received a request to continue item number three to this Tuesday. That would be October 29th. On behalf of Council District Eight, without objection, members, item three should be continued. And seeing no further specials, Mr. Pacheco. Four has been called special by Mr. Garcetti. Seeing no other specials, Mr. Clerk, would you please open the roll on the balance of the items? Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Those are approved. Item 37 forthwith, please. Next item.
Mr. President, items numbers 38 through 70 are items which public hearings have not been held.
And once again, I do not have requests, members of the public, to address the council on these matters. We shall deem the public hearing satisfied, and without objection, consider these matters today. Ms. Grue.
On behalf of Councilmember Hahn, we'd like to continue item 70 to Tuesday.
Request to continue item number 70 to this Tuesday, October 29th. Seeing no objections, so ordered. Mr. Garcetti.
60 and 63, please.
60 and 63 called special by Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, members, item 49 special, and item 68, I'm told, should be referred to the Public Works Committee, and I would like to set a date for it, to be returned in about a month. Ms. Perry.
Okay. I see no objection from the chair of the committee. So without objection, members, item 68 shall be referred back to Public Works Committee. Item 49 is called special by Mr. Holden as well.
Mr. President, item number 68 would be continued in council until November 26, and in the interim, referred to the Public Works Committee.
Right. Without objection, so ordered. Any other specials? Any other specials? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on the balance of the items. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Those matters are approved, items 38 and 39 being ordinances. Hold over for a second reading.
November 1st.
Mr. Clerk, do we have previous meeting minutes to approve?
Yes. Movements, excuse me, approval of the minutes?
Mr. Garcetti moves, and Mr. Pacheco seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval?
Mr. Weiss moves, and Mr. Holden seconds.
Items called special are now before you.
Okay, then let's return now to presentations. Chair recognizes Councilmember Labange.
Thank you. I'd like to ask Councilmember Garcetti to join with me right now and salute someone in our community who is very special to us, who will watch, take your visitors' pants off. Please welcome Peggy McLeod. Peggy is a resident of the Silver Lake District, lives on a beautiful street with very nice trees.
And unfinished wall.
And unfinished wall that you're going to get done, because you've been helping so many people out. They're beautiful jack-o'-lantern trees that line Tesla. But she also has been in a business as Peggy developed Jack of All Trades.
Jill.
Right. Do you know Jack? Jill, this is Jill. Anybody know Jack of All Trades? Raise your hand. I want you to meet and welcome Jill of All Trades right now. Give a big hand for Peggy McLeod. For 20 years, she's been in business, 15 in the Silver Lake area. She also produces a welcome book for Silver Lake residents who have, when she found new neighbors moving into her areas, she put a little book together to welcome them. She's very involved in her community, and she is opening a new paint store. So I follow Mr. Zine, who had those great citizens from the West Valley who are battling the efforts of graffiti with someone, Peggy McLeod, who has a great business that she's enterprising in Atwater Village, but a resident of the Silver Lake District. And I wanted my colleague, Eric Garcetti, who was very helpful as we worked together as council members in shared areas, to speak about the great Peggy McLeod, Jill of All Trades.
Thank you, Councilmember Labange. Congratulations, Peggy, too. I just cut another deal with this Great Welcome to Silver Lake booklet that she makes, and we're going to put voter registration in here, too, so when folks come from out of state, they're registered to vote in the city of Los Angeles. But Peggy is well-known in the area. I want to especially welcome you in opening this business in Atwater Village. I think Atwater Village's business community is becoming more and more vibrant every day, right alongside Glendale Boulevard, where we're going to do some amazing things with that wide boulevard, not only for pedestrian safety, but cafes on the street. We're undergoing an extensive study that the community is joining us with, and we hope you'll be an important part of that. But your paint every single day improves our neighborhoods. It's nice to know that we have a home for you in Atwater Village now, too, for your paint as well, so congratulations.
And I also, truly, not just for the paint store, but from a Jack of All Trades to a Jill of All Trades, God bless all the women who are working in the trades and doing a finer job. There's less paint on the floor when you hire, no paint on the floor. Okay, Jill. Please welcome Jill. This commendation is presented to you for Jill of All Trades, is a very special effort that you do for the communities. Please salute Peggy McLeod. I'll say a few words here.
Thank you very much. What we have done is Baker's Hardware in Glendale went out of business, so what we did is I took the staff from Baker's Hardware Paint Department, and we opened up a cute, quaint, old-fashioned paint store in Atwater Village. Customer service, table where you can sit down and look at color chips and books, and we're trying to fight the big boxes, so.
The address?
The address, 3534 Larga Avenue, across the street from the Wells Fargo Bank, corner of Larga and Glendale Boulevard. And just a funny thing for my Welcome to Silver Lake book I do, I didn't know this, but Laura Chick moved on my street.
She's Kennelworth.
On Kennelworth, and I dropped one off on her house, and she was just tickled pink that it's such a community, neighborhood that Silver Lake is, so.
That's right.
She's giving you preaudit, too.
No, 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 she's easy.
I got my city business license. I'll pay taxes.
A positive.
Positive. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Peggy. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Also, Mr. President, I'd like to ask Patricia Mitchell and Ed Tom to come forth here. You know, our city has many, 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 many great things, and one of the greatest cultural facilities in the city nestled in the Coinga Pass, located on the hills some 80 years ago, and served, this is jeopardy now, council members, and we've got to push your button to say what this is, and it's served us well in the area of music. I'm saluting this morning, the 80th year in operation of the great Hollywood Bowl. And I have a commendation for the Bowl, because they've just completed their season. And I don't know if any of you got to the Bowl this year, but it's really, is at a tremendous location in the hills, and the music, and the culture, and the outreach that you have, the very special museum that you have there that talks about the history. I remember seeing Johnny Cash there. I saw the Beatles at Dodger Stadium, not at the Bowl, when Johnny Hayes, who lives in my district, introduced the Beatles on behalf of KRLA. But all the work and the classical work that you've done, and the various Philharmonic, and the guests that you've invited to the orchestras, it's truly a reservoir, as we leave Silver Lake to go to Hollywood, of culture at the Hollywood Bowl. So I wanted to ask all council members, along with the mayor, to salute the Hollywood Bowl for their 80th anniversary, and wish them another 80 more, and tell them how important the Bowl is for providing culture for all of Southern California here in the heart of Los Angeles at the Hollywood Bowl. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Here we go. Please welcome the chief operating officer of the Hollywood Bowl, Patricia Mitchell.
Thank you. First of all, I want so much to thank Councilman Labange and the entire city council for this wonderful honor. It is, at the Los Angeles Philharmonic, it has been our great, great pleasure to try and operate the Hollywood Bowl in a way that brings a wide range of music, not just the Philharmonic, to our incredibly diverse community, and we hope to provide a proud beacon for Los Angeles around the world, because the Bowl is, of course, an extremely famous venue. We couldn't do that, have an enormously complicated 18,000-seat, open-air venue in the middle of a very large city, without incredible cooperation from many, many, many city agencies and departments. And on behalf of the Los Angeles Philharmonic and everybody who works at the Bowl, I want to thank you for that, too.
Ed? Thank you very much. I really can't add much more to what Patricia said, but I would like to, with all due respects to Councilman Labange, take a page from his book to say that, growing up in the city of Los Angeles, having attended Selma Avenue Elementary School, Bancroft Junior High School, Hollywood High School, and California State University of Los Angeles, that never in my wildest dreams would I ever thought that I'd have an opportunity to address the city council. Thank you very much. We look forward to seeing you all at the Bowl next summer.
All right, good. Thank you very, very much. Appreciate all the work you do. Ron, real quick.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. For our next presentation, the chair recognizes Councilmember Garcetti.
Colleagues, it gives me great joy to present this resolution today as we proclaim United Nations Day 2002, which actually was yesterday when we didn't meet, but nevertheless, to commemorate that. And today, we have representatives of the United Nations Association of the United States, the Pacific Los Angeles Chapter with us, Norma Foster, the president, and Dr. Adele Summers, the former president, who was actually present at the signing of the original resolution here in 1972. This proclamation that I'm presenting today was first presented on Thursday during the opening of United Nations Day ceremony at the L.A. Friendship Center. The United Nations Association Pacific Chapter Los Angeles observes United Nations Day with the city of Los Angeles, the local consulate generals, and over 35 non-governmental organizations. And when you think about Los Angeles, we are ourselves United Nations, West Coast United Nations, with over 100 spoken languages, over 142 recognized ethnicities. And I'd like to especially thank this council for their role in backing a resolution that urged the United States to rejoin UNESCO. We were a very important part of that, those voices that actually got the Bush administration to resign and rejoin UNESCO in the United Nations, and that was a big victory for everybody this year. Huge challenges remain at the federal level for us to really join as a strong partner with the United Nations, including the International Criminal Court, and some of the treaties that we have either not signed or withdrawn, most notably CEDAW, the Convention to Eliminate All Forms of Discrimination Against Women, which we have nations throughout the world that have signed. We're only one of about 12 that hasn't, but I know that we're implementing that here locally. The nations of the world each year celebrate the anniversary of the United Nations on October 24th, this being the 57th anniversary, to affirm their commitment to the principles and the goals of the United Nations Charter. And while this may just seem like a yearly commemoration, it has particular meaning right now as we look at world events and the importance of building a really united front when we look at world peace, and the importance of nations acting together and not unilaterally. So I think that this has particular meaning. But I'd like to present this to Norma and Adele, and maybe hear a word from them, proclaiming United Nations Day, October 24th, 2002. Congratulations. Thank you for all the work that you do for peace and justice in our communities and in the world.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mr. President and city council members, the United Nations Association Pacific Los Angeles Chapter and our membership, thank you for continuing to recognize United Nations Day with us in city council as you are doing today. In 1972, the press stated, "Los Angeles has joined the ranks of world cities today as the city council unanimously adopted a declaration of world citizenship pledging allegiance to the world community as represented by the United Nations." In the headline, actually, that time was, "L.A. Is Now a U.N. Town." Last night, at the World Peace Candle Lighting Ceremony, all presented gave messages for peace and unity in the world, our country, and for Los Angeles. The main message in 1972, strangely enough, was also unify L.A. And this is one message that came through very clearly in all the speeches made last night. For us in 1972 was unify L.A., and that's what everyone wished and prayed for last night, is for L.A. to stay unified. And in commemoration of our 30th anniversary with the city of Los Angeles, we would like to give a very rare 50th anniversary United Nations medallion peace coin to the council president and to Councilman Garcetti for being with us today and recognizing United Nations Day.
I was proud, excuse me, I was proud to be at the signing of the 1972 resolution. The United Nations is the way to world peace with quality education and economic development for all. Through world law implemented by the United Nations International Court of Justice, conflicts can be mediated and resolved to bring about a win-win way to world peace. President Woodrow Wilson, founder of the League of Nations, declared, "Friendship is the only cement that will hold this world together."
Thank you, Norma and Adele, and thank you for those powerful words. Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you very much for the presence to myself and to the president of the city council.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti, and thank you to those who promote friendship and peace in our city. and peace in our city. We now hear from Mr. Padilla for a special presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of two presentations I have this morning, I want to introduce friends of ours and friends of the city, representatives from Verizon Wireless. Members of the council, I want to begin by reading just a few statistics that may be sobering, but I think drives the point home as to why we're here today. Nearly one-third of American women report being physically or sexually abused by a husband or a boyfriend at some point in their lives. That's nearly one-third. In a national survey of more than six thousand American families, fifty percent of the men who frequently assaulted their wives also frequently abused their children. Only about one-seventh of all domestic assaults come to the attention of the police. Eighty-eight percent of victims of domestic violence fatalities had a documented history of physical abuse. The statistics go on and on, but I think the point is made that domestic violence does exist. Domestic violence is rampant in our country and we need to focus on the problems and to try to address the issues of domestic violence. The city of Los Angeles has tried to be a leader, has been a leader, in addressing issues of domestic violence locally. And the vast majority of our efforts are spearheaded by the Commission on the Status of Women, but we can't do it alone. For years, we've counted on a great partner in Verizon Wireless. I know just last year, there were more than two hundred wireless phones donated through the city to women and organizations helping curb domestic violence. They've been supporters of public service announcements and other efforts to bring information to the general public and certainly to the victims of domestic violence. We're standing here today to thank Verizon for their most recent contribution and gesture as they partner with us to address the issues of domestic violence. We're thanking them for a ten thousand dollar contribution to the city of Los Angeles. And in a minute, I'll be calling up Paula Petrotta from the Commission on the Status of Women to tell us exactly how this ten thousand dollars is going to be well spent. But here representing Verizon Wireless, I'd like to call forward both Michael Bagley, who's the Director of Public Policy, as well as Ken Mouché, one of the Public Relations Directors for Verizon Wireless. Michael, Ken?
Thank you, Councilman Padilla. It is an honor to be here today with you and so many others for whom ending family violence in our community is a top priority. I commend and thank all of you for your dedication to this issue. We at Verizon Wireless are proud of our domestic violence prevention efforts in Los Angeles and are pleased to expand our contribution by taking new action this year to lessen family violence in our community. Last year, Verizon Wireless joined Councilman Padilla and the Los Angeles City Commission on the Status of Women to roll out a comprehensive domestic violence prevention and awareness campaign in the greater Los Angeles area. The partnership included Verizon Wireless cash grants to local domestic violence prevention agencies, a donation of wireless phones and service to Los Angeles area battered women's shelters. Verizon Wireless also joined Los Angeles City Attorney Rocky Delgado, Los Angeles County Supervisor Mike Antonovich, Los Angeles Police Chief Bernard Parks, Los Angeles County and Sheriff Lee Baca last year to announce plans to establish a new child abuse prosecution unit in the city attorney's office. As a part of the public private initiative, Verizon Wireless awarded a forty thousand dollar grant to the city attorney's office to cover startup technology and equipment costs for the unit. Today, we are pleased to further our commitment to the city by awarding a ten thousand dollar HopeLine grant to the Los Angeles City Commission on the Status of Women to support their Women's Organizations and Services Directory. Hold up the check. This directory, the only of its kind in the county of Los Angeles, provides critical information such as rape and domestic violence hotlines, how to obtain a restraining order, shelter, legal services, housing and homeless services, and other vital resources. Another way all of us can help victims of domestic violence and the environment is by donating our old wireless phones. Through HopeLine, Verizon Wireless's exclusive national phone recycling program, used wireless phones, batteries, and accessories can be dropped off in any Verizon Wireless retail store throughout Los Angeles and nationwide. The phones are refurbished or recycled in an environmentally sound way and sold, with proceeds used to purchase wireless handsets for victims of domestic violence and for donations to nonprofit domestic violence advocacy organizations. As leaders of the Los Angeles community, I encourage you to inspire others to help prevent domestic violence by donating your old wireless phone today. Verizon Wireless is honored to be recognized by the city of Los Angeles for our efforts to curb domestic violence and we are committed to helping prevent domestic violence on not only a national level, but also right here in our local communities.
Thank you so much. I just want to commend the City Council for all of their efforts as it relates to heightening the awareness of domestic violence. As we know, October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And we also know that domestic violence does not stay at home, but does in fact enter the workplace. And the city of L.A. is one of the second cities in the country to have a domestic violence workplace policy. It is through those efforts and through our partnership for Verizon, who is a co-founder and we are a member of the California Corporate Initiative on Domestic Violence, and we are taking that message to corporations across the country. I'd like to introduce the President of our commission, Leslie Orteig, who will be talking about Verizon's contribution to the commission.
Whatever. Do what you want to do.
To President Pro Tim Ridley-Thomas, the members of the City Council, and guests, it is indeed my pleasure to be a part of today so we can thank the City Council once again for their ongoing support in treating domestic violence as the number-one public safety issue impacting women and girls in Los Angeles. Every day, there is something in the news where girls and women are victims of rape and some form of physical violence. And we can look in the newspaper today where we had two cases that were reported. The Commission on the Status of Women is working diligently every day to break the cycle of violence with the help of the City Council as well as our community partners and our corporate partners. Our efforts could not continue without the generous support of community and corporate sponsors such as SEIU, who has donated two hundred dollars to the commission. Representing SEIU today is Tommy Shaw, and I'd like to recognize her and the young lady with her, and I'd like to give them a round of applause for their contribution. And Verizon Wireless, who has been a committed and tireless corporate partner of the Commission on the Status of Women for the past three years. And today, to continue to show their support and commitment to eradicating domestic violence from our communities, they have donated ten thousand dollars to support the printing of our Women's Organization and Service Directory, lovingly called "The Red Book," which has the vital information about the myriad of emergency and non-emergency services for women. We distribute thousands of these directories each year to hospitals, schools, libraries, and nonprofit agencies. So on behalf of the Commission on the Status of Women and the women of the city of Los Angeles, we thank Verizon for their generous donation and the young girls who are going to benefit from this book. Thank you.
Michael, on behalf of the council, on behalf of the city, please accept this certificate of our appreciation for your leadership and support.
Chair recognizes Mr. Weiss for announcement and then Mr. Garcetti.
I appreciate your recognizing me, Mr. President. I just want my colleagues to know on a matter that is not before us right now, that the news has just come in that Senator Paul Wellstone of Minnesota was evidently on an airplane this morning that crashed, a small plane, and according to the wire reports, there were no survivors on the plane. He was crisscrossing Minnesota during an extraordinarily close and competitive campaign that I'm sure most of you are aware of, and these are just the preliminary reports that are coming in. I suppose there's a chance that at some point later in the day, we'll learn that these initial reports for some reason are inaccurate, but the White House is confirming that his name was on the manifest of the plane. And it's extraordinarily tragic and sad news, and I just wanted to make sure that you were all aware of that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss, and we'll see that the clerk expresses the appropriate sentiment at the time that it is confirmed, and we'll confirm with the mayor as to how we proceed beyond this point. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Weiss, for that tragic, tragic news if that is indeed the case of lost one of our great leaders in the United States. I was just rising to thank Verizon, I know that they're heading right out the door, but I wanted to thank them as well. I know their Call to Help program was something that Mr. Pacheco, my father, involved in a couple of years back, but they've been really tireless advocates here locally to making sure that people have a way out of their communities and as people who really connect folks in so many ways, this is one of the most powerful ways that you do, so thank you for that work.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Padilla.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do have, councilmembers, if you'll indulge me, a second presentation today, and I'm not sure if this is still a surprise or not, but I want to ask Councilmember Galanter to join me up here at the podium. You know, members, we're working hard each and every day in our districts and City Hall, and a lot of us have a lot of specific district issues that we're passionate about, some of us have very important policy issues that we care about, and sometimes we become affiliated with a specific policy goal, concern. But once in a while, one of us actually obtains national, if not international, recognition for leadership and accomplishment, and today I wanted to bring to all of our attention a great recognition that was bestowed upon one of our colleagues, Councilmember Ruth Galanter, who's recently received the Lifetime Achievement Award for Recycler of the Year from, from the National Recycling Coalition. And I'll let her explain a little bit more about the organization, her involvement, and really the magnitude of this award. I'll read some of the small print about the organization and its recent Congress and Exposition in Austin where Ms. Galanter was presented with the award. The National Recycling Coalition hosts an annual Congress and Exposition, and it's the largest industry gathering of its kind. Specifically, it's a nonprofit organization dedicated to the advancement of recycling, source reduction, composting, and reuse by providing technical information, education, training, and advocacy services to its members in order to conserve resources and benefit the environment. Specifically, in selecting our colleague and friend Ruth Galanter, they cited her track record on the environment here at City Hall. A lot of people think, well, what do cities have to do with the environment and environmental policy? Well, she's championed over fifty council motions over the years relative to the environment, including introducing a city policy that developed countless recycling programs. In her first year in office in nineteen eighty-seven, her efforts led to the state's first integrated curbside residential and commercial recycling program, which incorporated an economic development component. She's established comprehensive city facilities recycling programs that requires the participation of more than forty thousand employees at six hundred facilities throughout the city. She led the recycled procurement ordinance and a ten percent price preference amendment, which gives economic and market forces to encourage recycling and so many other things. She's been recognized by various organizations when it comes to recycling, when it comes to the environment, but I think this being a national award, a lifetime achievement award, really just captures her dedication, her passion, and her success in leadership in this regard, and I wanted to make sure that we highlighted it here on the council and we all had a chance to say, Ruth, we're proud of you.
Thank you. Thank you, Alex, and thank you, all of you, for noticing. I'm actually very proud of this award, and I'm proud of it not just because of what I've been able to do here, but because of what the city has been able to do. And they wouldn't let me see the application for the award until after the decision had been made, but what it does is, it's really the city that should get credit for this, and especially I have to thank Melody McCormick, who wrote the application, along with Lupi Vela and a number of other longtime supporters of our recycling efforts. But what the application recites is what the city has accomplished in the last fifteen years, and I was recognized for this because I was the house-put-in-the-motion person. I've received a number of surprises from this council, and so that's why I snuck around behind you there to see what this was all about before I got up here. I do want to tell you that the real lesson, I think, from this award for the city and for each of you as council members, is that nothing comes easy. Just putting a motion in does not actually make anything happen. And I cite as an example, it even works with the mayor, I'm going to give you two examples. Mayor Bradley announced early in my tenure here a city facilities recycling program, which I learned about because I got a call from someone I knew in San Francisco who has a paper recycling company, and he called to tell me that he had the contract, and I said, "That's wonderful, when is it going to start?" And he said, "It started last week." Well, you could have fooled us. So he and I discussed the fact that there was no city facilities recycling program here, and he insisted there was, and so I learned who's in charge of recycling. And I wound up, Mr. Lee Brown, who was in charge of all the custodians, and I went prowling around looking for what happened to this program that the mayor had unquestionably announced. And we eventually found it, Mr. Brown found it in somebody's inbox and had never made it beyond that. Well, as a result of my following up and his following, my finding him and his following up, we were able to actually get the program started, although the mayor had already announced it, the newspapers had reported it, and the contract had been signed. And the other example I want to give you is one that Alex mentioned, and that's the ten percent bid preference for products made out of other products. The first time I brought that motion in, the motion was defeated, and it was defeated because a number of members of the council and a number of city staff members were convinced that what we were saying was we would automatically pay ten percent more for things, even though there was a wonderful guy here who makes recycled trash bags out of old trash bags, and he showed us that the unit cost was actually less for the recycled one than the one made out of virgin plastic, you should pardon the expression. So the motion was defeated. It took two years to get that motion through the council, to persuade enough people throughout our city financial structure and on the council that it wasn't going to cost more money to do it that way. Then, nothing happened. And about two years after that, the way I know nothing happened was that Susanna Reyes, who was running the city facilities program, came bounding into my office one day and said, "What do you think about giving a ten percent preference for products made out of recycled products?" And I said, "Well, I thought we already did that." And she said, "We don't know about that, but the purchasing department came up with this idea." So my view was, fine, if making it their idea makes it happen, it's cool with me, and we brought in another motion and did it again. And then it actually happened. So I mention these things just to tell you that the party is only beginning when you get elected a council member. The tough part, you think campaigns are bad, the tough part is what happens trying to make the programs that you initiate actually come to pass. And it really hinges, as all of our recycling programs do, on the hard work of our staff and the recognition that we give every now and then. Susanna taught me this one, too. Once a year, we bring in the guys who actually haul those containers around. They are the people who really do the recycling here. You sort it, they make sure it gets where it's supposed to go. And we really need everybody to be a part of this team if we're going to do the job. Now that I represent the Valley, where everybody doesn't want a landfill, one of the very few things I did not have in my old district, by the way, and everybody thinks we need to do more recycling, you need to make sure that everyone on your staff recycles at home as well as at work, that everybody in City Hall knows to recycle at home as well as at work, because we're going to be stuck with landfills for a long time if we don't pick up our performance a lot. I had a great time in Austin. It was very interesting. We are still... We are still among the leaders in recycling, but we could lose this edge if we don't keep it up. So Alex, I want to thank you for taking note of this. I actually almost brought the award, and I have to tell you one last story. The award was made out of recycled glass, and I packed it in my suitcase on my way home. They insisted on searching everything in this suitcase. It's just a piece of glass. But it was September 10th, so that may have had something to do with it. Anyway, thank you very much.
Congratulations. There is a speaker's list, Mr. Labons, Mr. Garcetti, and Ms. Gruel, in that order, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ruth, congratulations, and your long history here has had an impact and a passion. And I know when we talk about recycling and I tell you my stories, you encourage it. So I'm just proud to stand and congratulate you. And I pulled my cans out on Wednesday evening, and you took it as the great compliment. I think of you, Ruth, and I'm very proud of all the efforts you've done and even my relationship when I was up on 111 North Hope of pushing the right way, the green way, the good way. Congratulations.
Mr. Garcetti.
Councilmember Galanter, congratulations on the award. I really appreciate everything that you've done. It's a real legacy of yours and something that I hope to pick up with when we work together on the e-waste recycling here, which is, I think, the next big thing, not only for here, electronic waste, televisions, cell phones, computers, et cetera, et cetera. Saw some great models that the city should be buying that are now have no cadmium in them, have none of the pollutants, none of the lead that NEC makes. We should be really leaders on that because there's a small tag that said City of Los Angeles that wound up in China where kids, you know, recycle this by hand. I know you're very familiar with it. I also want to personally thank you for recycling so many nuggets of wisdom as a seatmate. You certainly, as evidenced today, have institutional memory that is so critical for us moving forward. And my only regret in signing that was that it wasn't printed on a brown paper bag, but we can work on that in the future. Congratulations.
Yes, thank you very much. Now, Ms. Gruel and watch those brown paper bags. Mr. Garcetti, thank you. Proceed.
Well, maybe we can make sure we have recycled paper that we do our commendations on. I just want to add to my colleagues what they said because Councilwoman Galanter has been a leader from the day she stepped on this floor and for all of us, has really been a teacher and a mentor on the issues of environmental justice and recycling, et cetera, and has never taken no for an answer. So I just want to add my congratulations to this and that she's not only recognized here, but across the country and across the world, I think, for her leadership.
All right. Thanks. Any other members? Ms. Galanter, again, congratulations on behalf of all of us. Mr. Padilla, thank you for your presentation. Chair now recognizes Mr. Pacheco for an special presentation, followed by Mr. Holden, and finally, Mr. Reyes.
Mr. President, colleagues, it's a great honor and pleasure that I welcome Mr. Dave Knutson, owner of Stover Seed Company, David Knutson, his son Steve Knutson, and the president of Stover Seeds -- his son's right here, Steve Knutson, and the president of Stover Seed Company, John McShane, to counsel this morning. Stover Seed Company is like one of those few companies who has always been a part of Los Angeles, but most importantly, has always been a part of the downtown fabric. The rebirth we see in downtown right now in both the industrial and in our historic core area is really based on a few companies really hanging in there and being a part of the current economy. And for the last 80 years, Stover Seed Company has been part of that vibrant economy. It's remained an industrial part of downtown for all those 80 years, and 50 of the last years, they were on Sixth Street and Mateo. Most importantly, we wanted to recognize them today on their 80th anniversary because of their active participation in the community. They recently came together in partnership with some of the residential neighborhoods down there in industrial part, the artist district, the artist loft community, to defeat an application for a rave club in their neighborhood. They have been truly good neighbors to their partners down there, the artist loft, but not only that, they have been good participants of a community, and they have been sticking with us in the downtown community. We hope that they will be a part of the rebirth in bringing more retail, more wholesale, and we hope to bring more restaurants and coffee shops down to where they now call home. So I want to thank them for their efforts and present them with this resolution. So to Mr. Knutson, David Knutson, now therefore be it resolved that by the adoption of this resolution, the Los Angeles City Council does hereby congratulate Stover Seed Company on its 80th anniversary and extends best wishes for continued success in all of its future endeavors. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. [applause]
Thank you, Councilman Pacheco and the other council members for this award. The reason we are in downtown Los Angeles is that years ago, in the early part of the last century, farmers would bring their produce, their product, into the produce market, which, as you notice, you know it's in the area where we are. We had a number of competitors that the farmers would buy from, but they all left, and we are here, and thank you very much for this award.
Presentation, quick presentation. Mr. Ed Reyes is at a groundbreaking, cannot join us right now, but I did want to bring up a couple of children, schoolchildren visiting. Sorry, Mr. Holden, real quick.
Would you like to give Mr. Holden a presentation? He was --
They are members of the Club Social General from Enrique Estrellas Zacatecas, which is a hometown association. These students are here as a reward for their marvelous academic work in their hometown. They're being chaperoned by Alvaro Garcia. And so I wanted to present them a certificate of welcome to Samuel Castañón Ávila. Samuel, bienvenido. Rosa María Pérez de Ávila. Bienvenido. And Mariela Alejandra Jiménez Mayorca. Mayorca. Bienvenido.
I'd like to thank all the city council members, and especially Councilmen Ed Reyes and Councilman Pacheco for making this possible. I'd like to tell you a little bit about our program. We are bringing kids from Mexico since 1995 and with intention to promote education, with intention for the kids to stay in school and be a successful citizens in Mexico. Since 1995, when we brought the first three kids, this year, they are graduating from university. One is a teacher, one is a psychologist, and the other one is in computer science. So that's a great honor for us. Mexicana Aviation also is supporting us by giving us a fare ticket, round trip. The American Embassy usually expedite their visas so that they can be here in time for the summertime. This time took a little longer because of the, I guess, the 9/11 situation. But with us, we have also the president of this club, Alberto Mejia. And once they get over here, once the kids get over here, members of the social club take, they saw from their work, take vacations, they escort the kids, to take them to different parts of the city. So by bringing to this presentation, this is really a great experience that you're giving to this young man. They will always be, they will never be the same. They will be different from now on, and we thank you. We thank you for your acceptance of us at this moment.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. We now recognize Mr. Holden.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Mr. President, I'm really pleased today to welcome to the city council chambers Nancy Rodriguez and Tony Sanders, explorers from Southwest Division. Nancy Rodriguez is from Forché Learning Center, that's where she attends school, and Tony Sanders is with King Room Medical Center Magnet School. And they are role models for their peers in their respective communities and schools, shining examples of what our young people can be and are. And I want to welcome them and give them a nice round of applause for volunteering.
I would just like to say thank you for this. I didn't know that we really meant that much. I know that a lot of yous get in trouble nowadays, and I just want to thank you for acknowledging this positive thing I've been doing.
Mr. President, members, we are still honored once again to welcome to the city council chambers representatives from the Ethiopian community advocacy group here in Los Angeles. Mr. Garcetti had breakfast. He spent his whole day with the Ethiopian community, and he's going to join me in this presentation. According to the last census data, nearly half of the persons of Ethiopian descent who lives in the seat of Los Angeles live within the 10th council district. Recently, we renamed a section of South Fairfax Avenue Little Ethiopia. I'm excited about this. Sign designating the area have gone up, and the November 24th, we will have a street festival in the area to celebrate and learn more about the Ethiopian culture. In recent years, I was struck by the opening arms of policy that Israel displayed during the 1980s and 90s, when it airlifted thousands of Ethiopian Jews to Israel and welcomed them with open arms. The Ethiopian people who have set up businesses along Fairfax Avenue are always anxious to return their warm welcome to anyone who visits the community. On a side note, I'd like to say that I was in Israel in early 1990s and had an opportunity to visit, as I said earlier this week, the areas in which they were brought in and being orientated to their new environment and new life. I also had an opportunity to, while I was there, to visit the West Bank and went to the outpost, and it was really, really quite an exciting experience for me. And so, Mr. President and members, today I want to recognize the entrepreneurial spirit of the Ethiopian people of Los Angeles and applaud their efforts for promoting racial harmony and civic activism. I want to thank the members of the Ethiopian community and the Ethiopian American Advocacy Group as they stand, and let's welcome them with a round of applause. Before I call on them to speak, I want to recognize my colleague, who spent a lot of time in Ethiopia, Ms. Eric Garcetti, who will also extend a welcome to the committee. In fact, you started out with breakfast this morning.
That's right. Thank you very much, Mr. Holden. I didn't know this honoring was happening today, so it was purely coincidental that I started my morning with Kinchee, that I was able to join a good friend who I know many of you know in the community, Boge Gebre, who was honored here on Tuesday. And in yesterday's Los Angeles Times, if you didn't see, there was an editorial talking about her work in the Kambata region near Durame in Ethiopia. But clearly, I want to thank Councilmember Holden for including me in this, for his designation of Little Ethiopia, and to the contributions of the entire Ethiopian community. We have so many connections in the city with Ethiopia. Alashim Hammond, who's with CRA, is Ethiopian herself. Dave Ely, who did much of our redistricting work from the CLA's side, actually grew up in Ethiopia. And clearly, this cradle of civilization is such an important community to recognize here today. And it was great to begin the day with some great Ethiopian coffee, which comes from the Kafa region, which is where the word coffee comes from in Ethiopia. But that's just one of the many, many, many contributions that Ethiopia and Ethiopians have made throughout this world. So congratulations today.
Oh, David Ely did that to me, huh? All right, we can recognize Miriam Ahadu for comments, and also Dr. Makasha.
Did I get it right? Yes. Honored council members, Councilman Nate Holden, Councilman Garcetti, the Ethiopian immigrant community and the Ethiopian American business owners are honored to accept the certificate of appreciation bestowed upon us by Councilman Nate Holden's office. We have always appreciated and continue to appreciate the welcome we have received in the Los Angeles area. As immigrants who have left our own native country due to persecution, we are thankful that the city of Los Angeles has welcomed us with open arms. Thank you, Councilman Nate Holden. Thank you, the people of Los Angeles.
Mr. President and members of the council, my sister has just told you the circumstances under which we have been here. And I only want to add that we are deeply grateful to the city council for the decision taken to name part of Fairfax Avenue Little Ethiopia. And this was done under the initiative of Councilman Nate Holden and Garcetti and John Perry and Ridley Thomas and Weiss. So many of you have been unanimous in this decision, and that makes us feel very welcome in this city. And we have always been very welcome. The city has accepted us with open arms, and the people you see in front of you standing here are all leaders of our community who have brought themselves up by their own bootstraps to be very successful businessmen and entrepreneurs. And we are very grateful for this honor, which has been bestowed on us and the recognition that we have got by the city council and by Councilman Nate Holden's office. Thank you very much.
For those of you who know Lucia Hammond, who she talks, this doctor is her father.
Take the picture, that's all right. You get the picture real quick. Mr. President, members of council, I just want to congratulate everyone and the wonderful activity of the designation for Little Ethiopia, and enjoy as we connect all of Los Angeles together and enjoy the beauty of our city. Congratulations to all those advocates, and Mr. Holden, Mr. Garcetti, thank you.
Ms. Galanter.
Before you all leave, I want to say that I think it's very important, since Fairfax has actually become a center for the Ethiopian community, I just want to stress again what Mr. Holden already mentioned, that for the longtime Jewish residents of the area, it's really important for the Jews and the Ethiopians and the Ethiopian Jews and the Jewish Ethiopians to understand that this is a natural part of the outgrowth of being part of a single world. And as a Jew, I get a big kick out of the fact that we have this variety here in the city, and I think it's wonderful. So -- in the city, and I think it's wonderful. So I just wanted to stress that again.
Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say, it's such, it's so wonderful that you are all here today with your council member, Nate Holden. It is my pleasure and privilege to represent the other side of Fairfax. But I just want to give you my commitment to do everything that I can for your community, both in supporting Mr. Holden's efforts, and Mr. Holden deserves the credit for the naming, and to help you succeed regardless of what side of Fairfax you live on or what side of Fairfax your business is on. I wish you all the best. Congratulations, and thank you for this extraordinary show of support tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Thank you, Mr. Holden. Ladies and gentlemen, this concludes the presentation segment of today's agenda. Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
Item number four called special by Councilmember Garcetti.
Mr. Garcetti. Item number four was called special by Mr. Garcetti for Mr. Pacheco. Is Mr. Pacheco prepared to speak on the matter? Mr. Pacheco.
Mr. Holden is...
Let's hold this matter on the desk before proceeding to the next item. Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Mr. Holden is now designated an honorary Ethiopian, and we ought to give him a big round of applause for that. But once I get over there and tell him where you're really from, we're going to see what happens. I'll be right back.
Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
Item number six called special by Councilmember Holden.
Mr. Holden, item number six.
Mr. President, members, I think the department is going to come and give us an explanation on transferring of this property, ownership of the property. I think it's in Seal Beach.
Wendy, Nancy Water Power.
Yes, this is, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Before you today is a request to sell the property located at Seal Beach. Historically, the Department of Water and Power acquired Seal Beach Generating Station in 1937 from Los Angeles Gas and Electric Company. That particular generating station generated less than 100 megawatts. Haynes Generating Station was built in 1960 to replace and increase the capacity of Seal Beach. Seal Beach was then decommissioned in 1966. Decommissioned in 1966, and the land cleared thereafter, and currently, there is no structures on this land. And we did a competitive bid, this time last year, actually. We had seven offers, and we're trying to award to the highest bidder at this time.
This $4,501,000 was the highest bid, and the lowest bid was, can you tell me what that was?
Good morning. Craig Luna, Los Angeles Water and Power. It was about $1.5 million.
I missed that.
$1.5 million.
$1.5 million.
How many acres of land is this?
It's about 11 acres, including easements and street.
Is that the going, do you have any comps for the area?
We had it appraised about a year and a half.
Do you have any comps for the area?
Yes, we have had comps for the area.
And what are the comps?
The comp suggested a price of $3.5 million.
Based on the estimate?
Yes, sir.
So this is better than we would have gotten on nearly?
Yes, sir.
So, all right, Mr. President members, I think it's important to know that the Department of Water and Power is liquidating, releasing themselves of some of the properties that they have holdings. Last time they did that, I got real upset about it because it was Mojave Desert, and we lost out on that deal. We had to buy back in, which cost us more money. So you're pretty satisfied with this transaction, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, Mr. President, if there's no opposition, I would support it.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Other members wishing to be heard on this item, item number six. Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. Mr. Clerk, Mr. Pacheco's back. Let's return now to item number four. Mr. Pacheco.
Mr. President, colleagues, this is an item when we talk about combating crime and fighting crime, we always have to deal with the situation where we sometimes have properties where the tenants are the problem and the property owner does not want to take responsibility. So we've introduced this issue where we talk about narcotics and gang-related crime and eviction program. And I want to bring up, no, I'm sorry, I don't want to bring up the city attorney, but I do want to move to amend the report that on page four, on page four, section two, the second full paragraph, we had to insert at the end of it, removing the period, except that electronic communication for purposes of this definition shall not be limited to electronic communication that affects interstate or foreign commerce. It's basically a technical amendment, colleagues. But I think the most important thing is that every time that we work, and the clerk has the appropriate language, Mr. President, every time that we're dealing with gang activity and narcotics sales in our community, the community expects us to be innovative and to come forward with some solutions, I would simply ask for your support. This gives our prosecutors, our city attorneys, another option in dealing with this whole issue and this whole problem. So I would simply ask for your support in passing this motion and approving this ordinance so we can combat crime in our districts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pacheco. Members, is there any objection to the amending motion offered by Mr. Pacheco? Seeing none, then we shall consider item number four as amended. Other members wishing to be heard on item number four? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That is approved.
And as much as this is an ordinance, it will be held over for a second reading one week until November 1st.
November 1st, the second reading. Next item, please.
Item number 10 called special by Councilmember Weiss.
Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just ask if we could make a technical amendment to this matter to make it retroactive to October 22nd. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, with that minor amendment, members, let's open the roll on item 10 as amended. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That is approved. Next item.
Item number 24 called special by Councilmember Labange.
Mr. Labange.
Mr. President, members of council, the department's transaction has answered the questions. Thank you.
Okay. No further questions from Mr. Labange. Other members wishing to be heard on item 24. Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That is approved. Next item. Item number 49 called special by Councilmember Holden. Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, I think someone from Wreckin' Parks or maybe Ms. should come forward and tell us how we were able to engage in this transaction of land from this city to the church, and have the city attorney give us an opinion, represent whether or not we can separation church and state, does this apply at all? And then tell us about this whole project. Has the city attorney looked at this from the standpoint of separation church and state?
Yes, Mr. Holden, this is not a gift of land. This is a shared use agreement, and it's like we do with the schools.
Schools are not churches, but go ahead. Go ahead.
Robert Katamatsu from the CAO's office. I have Joan Ritzel here from the Department of Wreckin' Parks, a real estate agent. However, I'll give you a recap of how this all started. In the middle of 1998, there was some community input to have a shared use facility or land to alleviate some of the play areas that are in that area, to give more area for sports to be played. And since that time, there was an agreement, a shared use agreement, that was executed between the department and Cavalry Church with the council approval.
What church?
The Cavalry, the Cavalry Church of Pacific Palisades.
Is this precedent-setting, or has anything like this been done before with a church religious order?
Not with this church.
Any church that you know of?
I'm unaware of that.
I'm unaware of, Joan Ritzel, Recreation and Parks, I'm unaware of a similar agreement.
But carry on.
And since that time, after the execution of the original agreement, there was a permit that was required from the California Coastal Commission, and the California Coastal Commission required some considerations, and those considerations were included in the amendment that is before you today.
So what are we doing here? What's the agreement all about? Tell us about it.
Okay, basically, the agreement allows for a carving into the hillside of the Santa Inez Canyon Park to allow for a larger play area or play field so that the community members and their kids can be allowed to play in that area. And this agreement is for 25 years.
So what you're saying is that the city is going to share, let the church use its property, a certain portion of, how many acres?
About one acre, and there's also about, I think, three or four acres of church property that is going to be used.
So we're going to join together with the church, you use about one acre of the city's land, and they're going to develop that into a recreational site? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, the land is now unusable. It's a slope area.
And who will be using it? Will the community be, have access?
Absolutely. The American Youth Soccer Association and other groups, in addition to the students, obviously, at Cavalry Church.
So actually, the church is doing us more of a favor than we're doing them, would you say?
Absolutely. That is very, very true, and all of this is being done with the church's own funds.
All right, so it's okay for us to take what the church has to offer, but it becomes a conflict if secretaries, I mean, separate church and state if they take what we offer? So I think city attorney may be...
Well, this isn't for religious purposes. This is for school, for children's use, for the community's use, and it's just, it just happens that the property owner is a church, but it is not, it's not in furtherance.
The property owner is a city, and we're letting them use the property.
The church and the city both are contributing their property and their money to put this together. This is a not in furtherance of religion.
I understand how we make these arrangements sometime. All right, if it's for the good of the community, I'll sign off on it, but this is, it is precedent-setting.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Other members wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That matter is approved. Mr. Clerk, forthwith on item 51, please. Mr. Pacheco.
Forthwith on that last item?
Forthwith on item 49.
Mr. President.
Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Reconsideration on item 61T for a technical amendment, please.
Okay, we have a motion for reconsideration. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on reconsideration. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Item 61T now back before us. Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. President. It should then reflect that East 94th Street between South Wall and South San Pedro Street from 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. That is the recommended change.
Okay, with that technical amendment, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on the item as amended. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 60 called special by Councilmember Garcetti.
Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Pacheco.
Mr. President, colleagues, as you know, a couple of weeks ago, we had over 100 braseros here visiting with us, and we present them with the recognition on their contributions to this country. But part of that whole program, there was that 10% of their salaries that was taken, and they are trying to recoup that money that they earned while working here during World War II specifically. And this is a resolution in support of that effort. The state legislature has done the same. The governor has also done a proclamation in support of the braseros. I would simply ask that we join in their effort of finding justice for the money that was basically taken from them during this timeframe. Ask for your support, colleagues.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Pacheco. Other members wishing to be heard on item number 60. Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 63 called special by Councilmember Garcetti. There is a substitute motion that has been circulated.
Mr. Garcetti.
Just some technical changes in the substitute motion reflect further donations for the LA Mbach Med Week program. Thanks.
Okay, Mr. Garcetti moves the amending motion. With that objection, we shall consider the matter as amended. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll.
Mr. President, actually, it's a substitute motion that will be adopted in lieu of the original motion.
Okay, substitute versus an amending motion. Any objection to that? Let's open the roll on the substitute motion. Let's close the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That substitute motion is approved. Forthwith, please. Next item.
Mr. President, I believe Ms. Perry wishes to reconsider an item, 61 aye. Ms. Perry?
Motion for reconsideration, 61 aye.
Yes, that item on St. Vincent's Court should have been referred to committee. I'm not sure why it was overlooked, but it should go to Public Works Committee.
Okay, let's open the roll on reconsideration of 61 aye. Ms. Perry, I believe you're confusing that one.
Yeah, I'm confusing that with my other motion that is also a reconsideration motion. This was for the art walk in the old bank district this weekend, and we voted on it before we actually had the motions in hand, so I just want it reconsidered, but it shouldn't be a problem.
Well, the roll is open on reconsideration. Let's close the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay, Ms. Perry, 61 ayes now back before us. What is your wish for disposition? 61 aye.
It's a substitute motion that's before you.
Yeah, substitute motion, thank you.
Okay, so there's a substitute motion offered in lieu of the agenda 61 aye. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on the substitute. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That substitute motion is approved. And Ms. Perry, did you have a second motion for reconsideration?
Is it okay to do it now? Okay, that second motion for reconsideration was on an item involving St. Vincent's Court, which is on the border of my district and Mr. Pacheco's district, and we wanted that item referred to Public Works Committee so we could have a discussion and public hearing on it.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, do we have an agenda item number?
I can't identify it right at the moment. Do you have an...
From today's agenda?
No, it's a copy of a motion that we have to rescind and then have it reconsidered. I'll have CLA bring it up to you.
Okay, we'll await...
Okay, we'll hold it on the desk.
We'll await that motion from the CLA. Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
Now it's time for public comment on our agenda items.
Council calls for candido mares.
Thank you, Mr. President, council members, and I promise you, after November 4th, and the city remains as one city, I will disappear for a while. But I have to take this opportunity. Today, you acknowledged that Ms. Galanter is a very, very special person, and I, for one, Ms. Galanter, have to thank you. Because of you, I'm an environmentalist. I'm a tree hugger, and I'm proud to say that. Because of you, between 1985 and the year 2000, a lot of community service workers learned that when you clean the gutters, a lot of that stuff doesn't end up down in the ocean. Because of you, a lot of children that are working with the volunteer center are becoming environmentalists. So for that, I thank you very much, and that's part of why this city is a great city, because of you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This concludes the public comment portion of today's meeting. Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
Motion for posting and referral.
Motion shall be posted and referred.
Councilmember's request for excused from council attendance. Councilmember Perry requests to be excused on November 13th to leave at 11:30. A motion is required, and also on November 15th, which also meets policy for city business.
Okay, Ms. Grill moves. Ms. Perry is excused.
Councilmember Galanter requests to be excused on Friday, November 1st for city business. This also meets policy.
Ms. Galanter is excused.
Councilmember Ridley Thomas requests to be excused on November 1st for city business. A motion is required.
Mr. Holden moves. Mr. Ridley Thomas is excused.
And Councilmember Perry requests to be excused on, excuse me, October 29th, arrive at 11:00 a.m. for city business. This meets policy. Ms. Perry is excused. The desk is clear. Members, are there any announcements today?
Mr. Labange. Tomorrow morning, along with the mayor and several members of council, I hope we all show up because the Department of Aging is having their very good senior citizens walking fair in Lake Balboa. So I'm going to be there. Anybody else going to walk?
Anybody else going to walk tomorrow? You don't have to be a citizen, senior citizen to walk. You going to come, Nate? Out in the valley? You've been in the valley recently. You can come down and walk with me.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. Let me also mention that Foothill Division, the police station in the Northeast Valley, there will be fingerprinting and other children's activities there tomorrow morning into the early afternoon. You can call the station for more details, but parents want to have their children fingerprinted for safety precautions. The event is open to the public. Any other announcements? Mr. Weiss.
Colleagues, will you please join me in just a brief moment of embarrassment for the wonderful Denise Sample and join me in wishing her well over the next several months as she proceeds on to, for at least just a couple months, bigger and better things, and then she'll be back. Thank you, everybody.
And I guess our final announcement is that there are four former Los Angeles Dodgers by the names of Mike Socia, Mickey Hatcher, Ron Renneke, and Alfredo Griffin, who need our spiritual help this weekend as they take on the San Francisco Giants Saturday, and yes, there will be a game Sunday at Edison Field in Anaheim. Let's shoot on those former Dodgers. Mr. Garcetti.
One other announcement, for those folks, I think Councilmember Reyes is going to be there as well. There's a big community cleanup around Belmont High School. We're expecting about 500 to 600 people. There's food for everybody. It's going to be involving all the members of the community, the students, and if folks around there, please come by Belmont High School on Saturday morning, tomorrow morning. I believe we start around 8:30. We'll definitely be in full gear by 9:00 and hitting the streets, so we'd love to see some citizens out there.
Other announcements? Adjourning motions? Please rise for adjourning motions. Members of the public, please rise. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I ask that we adjourn today in memory of Harry Hay, who passed away on Thursday, October 24th. Harry was one of the founders of the modern gay and lesbian liberation movement. He helped found the Madikin, or Madashin, sorry, Society in the early '50s, which was one of the first groups to openly advocate on behalf of gay and lesbian liberation, and then helped found the gay spiritual radical fairy movement in the 1970s. He was somebody who was recognized for his politics outside of the gay and lesbian community as well, but was really a giant at a time that was such great fear, not only in being openly homosexual, but certainly in organizing around issues in the community was something that was almost unheard of. And his life partner, John Burnside, and his adult daughters Hannah and Kate are his survivors, but we have lost one of the great political individuals in America with his passing, and we hope that he rests in peace. I also ask, Mr. President, if we will also adjourn in memory of Beulah Quo. She was an award-winning actress and community leader who passed away on Wednesday, October 23rd. A real trailblazer as well, long before Asians and Asian-Americans were making it in Hollywood, Quo was making her mark in Hollywood, and perhaps her greatest gift to our community was her founding of the East West Players, which I know Ms. Perry has been a strong supporter of in the Ninth Council District, which was the nation's first Asian-American repertory group. Her husband, Edwin Quo, her daughter, Mary Ellen Shu, five grandchildren, and her son, Stuart Quo, who many of us know as head of the Asian Pacific American Legal Center, are her survivors. May she also rest in peace. And lastly, I'm sure many folks will be saying something about Senator Paul Wellstone, his wife, and his daughter, who passed away this morning, as Councilmember Weiss mentioned, in a plane crash in Minnesota. I know that as folks hear this, they are not only shocked and saddened, but mourn another one of the great leaders in America. Mr. Wellstone, I think, taught many of us. He was a college professor at the time who had been very involved in Jesse Jackson's presidential campaign, didn't think he had a real chance of winning political office, but decided to throw his hat into a race for the United States Senate two terms ago, and confounded all the pundits by being elected, took no money from political action committees, took no special interest money, was elected purely on the strength of a grassroots campaign that he waged, getting folks out to vote who had never voted before, students, seniors, folks from ethnic communities that traditionally did not have a high turnout, and it was on their backs that he was elected, and it was their voices that he amplified as one of the most progressive voices in United States politics and in the Senate. Even though he's up for reelection, he spoke very loudly against moves in this country towards war with Iraq. He was somebody whose strength of convictions is almost unparalleled in the United States Senate, and we are all deeply saddened as a nation to lose him today.
All members.
I just want to add to Mr. Garcetti's comments about Senator Wellstone. I had the pleasure of meeting him several times and listening to him speak about his commitment to public service, clean government, environmental issues, and was an extraordinary leader. We are all saddened by his death today, and it makes all of us take a deep breath and realize how our public servants have really committed themselves to this country, and just want to echo many of the comments that Mr. Garcetti made as well, that we send our wishes and prayers to his family and all of those, and his state and across this country who are mourning his death today, and his family.
Mr. Labonge.
I just want to second Mr. Garcetti's adjourning motion for Harry Hay, please.
Ms. Perry? Mr. Reyes?
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to join Councilmember Garcetti on Beulah Quo. I'd like to take time to speak a little bit more about her contributions to our city. She was also a board member of the Chinatown deeds post, as well as the Chinese American Citizens Alliance. As you might already imagine, she's been extremely generous in lending her name to numerous Asian Pacific organizations for fundraising activities. Throughout her career, she remained active in the civil rights, as well as women's rights movement. She was definitely in the hoo-soo of the Chinatown community and served as an ongoing role model for countless young women.
Mr. Pacheco.
All members.
Colleagues, I'd like to adjourn in memory of Gonzalo Rios Manji Jr. He passed away on October 21st of this year. Husband of 43 years, retired truck driver, 41 years, servant to our community for 35 years in organized youth sports, a graduate of Roosevelt High School, class of 1948, active in the North Hollywood Little League, All-Stars in North Hollywood of both the Little League and Senior League. He is survived by his spouse, Mrs. Manji, eight children, and 13 grandchildren. I'd like to adjourn in memory of Dave.
Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Mr. President, members of the council, it was in this very building that I had the honor of meeting and conversing with Senator Paul Wellstone, and from that meeting, developed a relationship that will be cherished. I recognize him as one who was indulged with commitment, with passion, with intellect, and with purpose that enhanced the level of discourse in this nation around issues of conscience and substance, and I'm, as the rest of us are, simply stunned by his untimely demise and the lack of notice for the same.
Mr. Weiss.
Mr. President, I just want to join Mr. Ridley Thomas and Ms. Grue and Mr. Garcetti, and speaking for a moment about Paul Wellstone, my three colleagues have spoken extraordinarily, eloquently about him. Let me just add two points. One, there was something really wonderful, whether or not you agreed with him on many issues or any issues, there was something really wonderful when 12 years ago, a college political science professor was elected to the United States Senate. I mean, just think about that. A college professor went to the Senate, and the second point is related to that. Why did he go to the Senate? Certainly, in part, it was because of what Mr. Garcetti talked about, about being a true voice for the powerless and really being committed to empowering his community. But the other reason that he went, and something that I will bear in mind as I think about his legacy, and hopefully all of you will too as well, is the power of ideas. These jobs that he had and that we have are about service, but they're not just about service. They are and ought to be about ideas as well, and about the power and strength of ideas. And he was a man who was so committed to intellect and to deep reflection on what he did and what politics did and what politics, how politics mattered. And he really, of all college professors who've had an impact on us, this left-wing professor from small Carlton College in Northfield, Minnesota, might have one of the more enduring impacts on all of us in this new century, and I join all of you in remembering a truly wonderful, great man and his family.
Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
President, I think we should also join and adjourn a member of his wife, who was on the plane, and daughter, and all members.
Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you all very much. This meeting is adjourned.